Next on the agenda is police and court. Everybody has the police department report. Pete, would you like to say anything about this?
No.
Business as usual, right?
Business as usual.
Yes. And we have Wayne here from the construction manager for the police department building. He's here to give-
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, he's here to give us a report.
For the record, I'd just like to say, I'm sure I speak with the entire public that-
I'd just like to say, what exactly your job you've done running the meeting this evening.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, former trustee Wayne Reifenberg.
I'm Deputy Mayor.
Okay.
And Deputy Mayor.
Former Deputy Mayor.
Okay, I want to bring you up to date a little bit about what's transpired since our last meeting, and then talk to you a little bit about what's going on as we go forward for the next couple of weeks prior to our next meeting. And then I want to talk about a little bit about some engineer and architect billing and the change orders, and then the bids for the generator. So, since we met last, since last meeting, all the mechanical, electrical plumbing and security system and foam rough ends have been completed, and they are all roughed in. The basement ceiling has been insulated and sheet rocked and taped. The interior walls and ceilings have been sheet rocked. The front entry is installed. The building is secured. The electric and water is operational through the building. Senator Hudson has run the electric to our, to the structure. The water is to the building as well. The exterior trim has been completed, and most of the siding on the east side, north side, has been completed, and that is underway at this time. Temporary heat and electric is installed. The interior door jams, the metal box, mostly have been installed. And the concrete pads for the antenna and the portable generator, emergency generator, have been installed. As we go forward, the siding will be completed within the next couple of weeks. Resistant frames are here and will be installed. The spray installation is due to be done within the next couple of days in the attic And the interior ceilings and walls will be taped, and the interior finishes started. So, we're pretty much done with pretty much the exterior of the building, and the interior finishes will be initiated probably prior to our next meeting. So, things are going well. We need to talk a little bit about a couple of issues in regard to our engineer and our architect. I sent you guys an email in regard to the engineer scenario. The engineer has fulfilled his obligation for the most part, but he ran out of the scenario in regard to his initial pricing. And as a result of that, there were some, a couple of extra things that needed to be done, and as a result of that, we agreed that he would give, he would complete that scenario in regard to a time and material basis. I think I sent you an email in that regard. Excuse me, the anticipated cost was approximately $1,500. I think it'll be less than that. The final inspection, I think, is the only thing actually left now. So, I just want everybody to be aware of that. We have kind of a similar situation in regard to the architect. We just received a bill, and I'm sure you probably have all seen it because I'm sure you've already signed all the vouchers. But we did recently get a bill within the last couple of days from our architect in the amount of $3,360. But I just want to make mention of the fact that his billing, he has anticipated billing was for $24,000 for the rest of the project. Because of a lot of scenarios that have transpired, transpired through the course of this scenario as a result of supplemental issues that he's had to deal with, he's gone over what he anticipated we were going to have to do. So, with this bill of $3,360, he is actually $1,740 over what he anticipated his fee was going to be.
And that's more. And that's going to be more, huh?
Right. And this is through no fault of his own. He has had to deal with, quite frankly, what he has done for us for the amount of money that he's, that he initially had said he was going to charge us has been, quite frankly, he's given us a lot. So, I just want to make you aware of the fact that as we go forward, we're going to have some additional billing. It's on a time and materials basis. And I could give you a copy of this if you haven't already got it.
Wayne, are you the point man for all of these, for the engineers, for the architects, for the builders and so on? Are you doing?
Yes. Pretty much.
Pretty much, okay.
I'm Brant and I-
I've been going to the meetings too, just to, just to have, you know, liaison for the-
Brant's been pretty much involved with almost every scenario that we've been dealing with, so, and we're going to talk about a couple of other issues that we have to deal with here that Brant has been very much involved with.
You're going to see Wayne's a guy, I mean.
But I just want to make you guys aware of the fact that Phil Zemke has been absolutely an amazing person through this whole process. And we've had some issues through this whole process that he has been wonderful about. He's spent an incredible amount of time in regard to issues, regard to products, sublimations, and things of that sort, PCOS, change orders, referrals, things of that sort in regard to the products, change orders. So, I think he's extremely justified in, in what he's doing in regard to what he's, what he's been charging us up to this point. I think we've gotten a great deal. Next issue I want to talk about is the change orders that, that we've experienced as we've gone through this process, some of which you have already been aware of. I'll just give you a, I think I have a copy for everybody here. In these kinds of situations with a project of this magnitude, obviously there's change orders. There's situations that come up where we have to deal with scenarios that we didn't anticipate when we expect the product, the project out. Some of these change orders we've already discussed, and we've already approved, but there are a couple this evening that we do need to deal with. If you take a look at the scenario in front, in front of this scenario, we've already approved change orders in regard to the sump pit, the wood blocking to the window nailing, the concrete pads and cement tubes for the antenna, the LP gas pad, and the generator pad. The additional excavation that we had to do for the conduit to the generator pad. And we have a credit for the water tap, which is really not a moot point. We're going to get money back for that. But there, there are, there's one scenario that we do have to deal with tonight. I will make mention of the fact that Brant and I had a conversation. We had to make a decision about the added mounting blocks for the light fixtures. This was a scenario that we had to make a decision on, and Brant and I got together, it was a scenario where we had to make a decision based on continuing the construction. And this involved blocks for the lighting, the mounting of the lighting fixtures, because we were using hardy board siding. The hardy board representative recommended that we use blocks. They were not specified in the initial project, but because we had to have them, and because we were going to hold up the construction, we had to make a decision on that, and it was $1,135. It was a scenario that we, I didn't have the time to come to you folks and ask you to make, to approve it, so I got with Brant, and I don't know if we can be arrested for that, but we did-
It's going to look really good, too. I mean, these are the blocks that go, that, they blend in with the siding, so it looks, you know.
It was a scenario that we, it was, it was a no-brainer. We had to do it. It was the right thing to do, and we made the decision to do it. The other issue was columns, the upgrade in the columns. I emailed you folks all that, and we all agreed that that was the right thing to do, and we did upgrade the columns, the six columns on the floor on the front porch and to two on the back porch to a raised panel column as opposed to a square column. That was a cost of $1,079. You guys approved that, so we're good with that. The only outstanding change order that we have to deal with at present is the shoring. And I, we have had these conversations, I think, for actually several months. Just to give you a brief synopsis of the scenario that we dealt with, during the initial phases of the construction project, it was discovered that we had a unsecure soil situation on the south end of the project. And as a result of that, and as a result of the scope of land that we had on the south end of the project, we only had 10 feet to deal with. And we had to go down 12 feet in order to put the foundation in, and the soil was insecure. And as a result of that, we could not bridge down and be safe in, in constructing the foundation and the footings. So, as a result of that, we had to install jersey barriers. We actually installed two jersey barriers at different levels on the south side of the project, and that was not in, in the specifications, obviously. We didn't realize the insecurity of the soil at that point. So, as a result of that, there was increased costs of excavation, the increased cost of the installation of the jersey barriers, and our initial quotation from our general contractor was 14, something, a little over $14,000. We have had innumerable meanings. We've given this to our engineers, and we are down now to the scenario of $9,000-
$258.
$258. And we have fought and fought and fought, and we're there. And quite frankly, I'm of the opinion that we're not going to do any better than that. And so, I would like to recommend to the board that we approve this change order and get this behind us. So, there.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the change order as, as read by Wayne.
Some move.
Just one second. A second tomorrow.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wayne, I have a couple of questions. You know, there's three questions. The first one has to do with the credit to the water tap. Does this come out of my-
Oh, no, no, no.
What is, what is that credit? For $1,200?
Yeah, this is a credit to our, to the project. In other words, in the specification, it was bid that they would have to go to the main in order to get to the water. But as a result, because of the fact that we had an existing curb cock, we didn't have to go to the main, so we're going to get a credit from our general contractor from the, towards the project. He's going to give us a credit.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with the work part whatsoever.
Second question I have is maybe a little bit premature, but what do you do about internet connections and telephone connections? And how do you connect, or are you going to connect with the, with the village hall here or with the town hall? Is that, how is that working out? Is there going to be any wires strung across here?
We're, we're going to be totally-
Independent?
Interconnected with the village.
Okay.
For sure.
How do you do this with the, with the village hall here?
That's all done, Peter may press.
Yeah, basically, we're connecting with, we're already connected with Frontier and Time Warner now.
Yeah.
Frontier for the phones and Time Warner for the cable. And that's, we're just going to move from what we have over there to over here. They're just running a line off the street for the phones and the Time Warner.
You have your own server?
Yes, we have our own server. We have several servers actually over there now. So, we're just moving, when we move, we're just going to move our physical stuff over, and the lines will be run right off the street like it normally is. And that's, that's it. It's really that simple.
But the police station would totally be interconnected with, with all of our-
Yeah, my question is, how are you going to do that? Are you going to have actually a coax cable running underground or above ground or something like that? How do you interconnect?
No, all the wiring is going to go into the, excuse me, into our building, which is exactly the same as what we have now. We are connected, excuse me, we're connected presently, the police station is connected with our, with our whole network. And we're simply going to move what's there to the new police station.
Okay. I, I think I need to talk to the, to the people who do our, our work here for the internet because I had a discussion today, and they thought you were sort of standalone over there.
Well, standalone meaning, what do you mean?
In terms of your telephone system?
Right. It's separate telephone.
And in terms of your servers, if you have your own server, that there's no-
Right.
No connection between the two of us?
No, the police department isn't connected that way, because our, our server that operates our law enforcement system is a standalone system. That can't be connected to anybody else. That's a secure system, along with also the tracks program, which stands for traffic and criminal software. That's what we do all our accident reports on and all our ticket writing. That's connected via the internet to the New York State up in Albany. All our tickets that we write, our accident reports we do are transmitted electronically up to Albany, and that's a separate system.
Okay.
So, that, that's a standalone, so nobody has access to that. Just, that's just police. So, our system can't, as you're talking about interconnected, our system can't be tied to your, be open to the, to the village hall. That's because it's sensitive material.
But the village, you're going to be connected to the village in regard, you're still going to be able to get-
Oh, yeah, the website, internet, all that. Yeah, of course.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, but you get, you get that from somewhere else.
Yeah.
You get it through, what's it called, Time Warner.
Right, our cables to Time Warner, right.
Yes.
Right.
But you're not really, you don't have a cable running between the two buildings here?
Not a physical cable, no.
Not a physical cable.
No, but we still have connectivity with the internet and, you know, and all the email and website and that stuff.
I mean, his, his, his internet address of Village Police is still going to be accessible, just like it is present.
Right.
I was mainly worried about the, the servers, where we have to put at some point a new server in here, and I guess what you're telling me is that you have, you have to be separate.
Oh, yeah, of course. You know, we have to be separate, just like the courtroom is separate than, than everything else. The court's separate and the police are court, are separate, yeah.
Last question I have is, you say here we have total changes a day of $18,000 in the district.
Correct.
Where do we stand in the overall picture here on this?
You guys have gotten a report, a monthly report, but I, we had $40,000, I believe.
Right, but we also came in lower than we predicted.
Right.
Yeah, so, depends on how you look at it.
We're well, we're well within our budget.
Yeah.
Well, we're within the budget. Because I don't, I can't-
We had a $40,000 figure in there for contingencies. Of course, we're, we're not done yet.
Plus, we came in lower than we thought we would.
But we're well within our budget present.
So, we borrowed $900,000?
Correct.
And we expended how much?
I don't have those figures right now, but you just got a report.
Lisa came up with something recently, I think.
I have it downstairs.
Yeah.
You just got a report. I just got it within the last couple, I'd say about five days ago. You got a report that says exactly what we've expended so far.
We, we stay below this money that we borrowed, right?
The nine?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, we're well within our budget. Of course, again, you know, we haven't, I mean, we, we figured in furniture, and we figured in lockers.
Well, that's why I'm asking, is because I sat with Pete the other day, and he's got some, some other requirements. I'm wondering if they would come out of this money we borrowed.
But we had, we didn't figure, we figured that into our budget, too.
Yeah. All that was figured in.
Yeah.
We tried to anticipate everything. I think, and I think so far, we're good.
When you and I talked yesterday, you had, you had about-
Some of those things on your sheet were already figured into that bond that you borrowed, right?
There were some that were not figured in.
Right, there were only a few small things, but the stuff that we checked off, like I said, the lockers, the holding bench, that kind of stuff, those were figured into the bond, yes.
So, we should not have to use any other money?
I hope not.
I'm hoping we're actually going to be able to pay, make some of our payments out of this.
And I think there was about, there was about $15,000 left that needed to be somehow, no, no, I think $7,000 it was, that needed to be funded some, some other way.
Right.
And that probably can be funded out of that $900,000.
Yeah, as of right now, where we are presently, we're well within our budget. But again, we're, you know, the finishing, finishing touches sometimes can be things that, you know, you know, hopefully we anticipated everything, but we put $40,000 in there for contingency. I think, I think we're going to be okay.
Is, is there a completion date?
Yeah, right now, we're looking at first week in April?
I think the last weekend in April.
Last weekend in April. Yeah, I think we're pretty on target at this point.
But we're fighting for every nickel, too.
That's good.
Okay. Anybody got any other questions? The last issue we need to deal with is the emergency generator. And this is a little bit of a complicated issue, and I'll try to be brief about this. But initially, we had thought that our responsibility in regard to the portable gen, or the emergency generator was simply the purchase of the generator and the transfer switch. And as we had gone forward in, in soliciting bids, it was ascertained through our architect that the specification stipulated that our electrical contractor that won the bid for the electrical contracting was actually responsible for the transfer switch, but he was not responsible for any of the wiring from the building to the generator pad. So, as a result of that, I had gotten initial bids for simply the generator and the transfer switch, so I had to go back out for another bid, and deleting the transfer switch and the bid specifications actually needed to be the generator and the wiring from the transfer switch to the generator pad. So, I have now gotten new bids. I have gotten three bids from three different corporations, and they are as such. Protective Power came in with a bid for the generator for $11,770. The installation is started for $550, and the labor and material to install the wiring from the, in the conduit from the transfer switch in the basement to the generator pad of $1,850 for a total price of $14,170. Gen Tech's bid was $11,800 for the generator. The installation startup was included in that price, and the price for the labor and material for the installation of the wiring was $2,480 for a total price of $14,280. And I got a price from Aris Electric, who is the, our contractor who is doing the electrical work in the building, for a total price, including the generator, installation startup, and the labor and materials for the wiring of $18,750. So, the low bid was for Protective Power of $14,170. I will make mention of the fact that Power, Protective Power is also the company that installed and maintains our existing generator that we have in this building presently. So, we'll leave it up to the board as to how you want to proceed in that regard.
Let me ask you, what is the delta here?
May I beg your pardon?
What is, you, you had included the generator before, right?
Yes.
So, now you have some changes coming up. Are these the changes, or is, is, what is, what's the cost of the new news here essentially?
No, the, the original bid was, was bid the wrong way, right?
Correct.
That's what you're trying to say.
So, now we have $14,000 new news?
No.
No.
Okay, what is, how much is the new news?
This is it.
Yeah, but what was, what was, what was your estimate in the past?
The initial bids they had given you was simply for the generator and the transfer switch.
Right, right, but how much were they compared to this?
Oh, well, the transfer switch was 500 and some dollars, $699, I believe.
And that was taken out?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm not asking the question right, but what, how much more do we have to pay you now? There's a change order coming here?
Well, for Protective Power, then it would be-
No, no, there's no change order. This, this is totally on our roof. This, this was not in the specification for the project whatsoever. This was our responsibility.
Okay.
The, the portable generator was our responsibility from the get-go. It was not in the specification of the project whatsoever.
But did you have an original estimate for a generator in the, towards the construction costs?
I, several, about a month ago, I had come to you and actually had given you quotations, the initial quotations for the generator and transfer switch. And then it, then it was determined that the specifications involved in, in the project bid, the transfer switch was included in our-
Right, right.
-electrical contractor's bid.
Right. I think Heinz is trying to figure out if, if this is added money from the original estimate in the whole project.
You, you may have $40,000 bucket left over or something like that?
Right.
And I'm wondering how much that gets degraded by?
Well, this, all of this is going to come out of that.
Okay, that, yeah.
All of it, okay.
That was the question.
Okay, so now we have only $25,000 bucket left over.
Right, correct.
Okay.
Are you sure?
But, but, no, no, we had this in-
We had this in.
We had this in our budget.
I don't remember the figure we had in the budget, but we had a figure in the budget.
Yeah, we had, we had this in our budget. I don't remember what exactly it was.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I think what I would like to see at some point is, you know, where, where we stand with respect to what we borrowed, what is, how much have we expended, how much more do you-
You, you get a report.
Well, I know, but I can't, I can't figure that out.
No, you're, you're talking about the total project cost.
Yeah, I want to see the whole, the whole, the whole project.
We have it downstairs.
Yeah. Didn't you, didn't they get dispersed, that report?
I didn't see you have another report that showed-
No, no, you give me a report of what we expended so far today.
Yeah, that's right. I read it, yeah.
I just got it, like, a week ago.
Well, if you have it, I can get it from these or from-
I can see that.
But I, I'd just like to understand, you know, we, we have, we borrowed that much money, we spent this much money, but we have to, we've got to have a little bit left over. I'd like to know where we stand against that, because we're having these change orders coming in, we're having this coming in.
I'll go over it. I don't think it's ready to go.
We don't need to fix, we don't need to do that now.
That's right.
There's one thing on here that's, that's wrong. Have you, have you looked at these figures?
Which one?
This. The Protective Power one here doesn't include the sales tax on the-
There's no tax.
税
Well, they put it on here.
We'll send him a tax exempt certificate and we'll take it off.
Okay.
Wayne summarized without the tax.
See, they put it on here.
$1,000 with, with tax.
Correct.
They're at the wastewater facility, too.
Do you have a report of that?
No.
No, he didn't get that.
Okay. That's good. Can I keep this?
Can you make us a copy?
No, I can, I can make a copy.
She has it, I get it.
Yeah. But this is a, a basic office.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
Because we're going to be doing our budget pretty soon, in the next week or two.
Yeah. But, I mean, basically, what this says is that, to date, as of December 2012, of the $900,000 bond, we've expended $192,534.2.
Yeah, I know, but that's early in the game.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the requisitions come in based on what's, what's completed to date.
Yeah.
But we get this on a monthly basis. I'm, I'm-
But you, you also know what, what you're projecting out, what you have to spend, so you have actuals, and then you have projected billing coming in.
Correct.
And then you have the change orders, and so on, all of that has to be taken out. What I'd like to know is, what is, what's left there?
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. But so far, we spent twenty-one percent of the, of the money that, that's bonded. I mean, and we have a structure that's upframed, insulated, sheetrocked, roofed, the mechanicals, electric, and I, you have some requisitions, I'm sure that Phil dropped off to you, that are fairly considerable, too, I would think.
Okay, so, we need a motion to approve this generator?
I move that we approve the purchase of the generator as quoted by Protective Power for a total of fourteen thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Anything else, Mr. Reifenberg?
Deputy Mayor Trout.
I'd like to thank you, Wayne, for, for continuing this project, even though you moved from the village to the town and you had to get off the village board, but Wayne volunteers his service to see the end of this project, I know he spent a lot of time on it. Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Okay, next is the dog report. Everybody has a dog report? Okay, he had one complaint from a barking dog, gave out the warning. On, on twelve nine and twelve twenty-eight, dogs have been reported lost and have not been found yet. No dogs were picked up in the village this month, and no charges were made. That's it for the dog report. Committee reports, is the tree commission is the first thing? Everybody got the tree commission minutes? I'll just go over the highlights. We voted for the officers for the next year, the terms will run from February two thousand thirteen to January two thousand and fourteen. Cecily Frazier was unanimously elected to chair. John Westler was unanimously elected to vice chair. Pruning, we're gonna have a pruning practice workshop on Saturday, March sixteenth, at two P M. in the mini park. Meg Crawford, a member of the tree commission, is gonna conduct that pruning. And March seventeenth is the rain date, so then March sixteenth is a pruning workshop at two P M. at the mini park. Anybody who would like to come, you're welcome. Our spring planting is gonna be Saturday, April twentieth, where we're looking to plant around twenty trees. Last night, I went to the town board meeting, and they approved us planting trees in the cemetery along Route nine, above the wall, if you're familiar with that area, not along the street, but above the wall. And obviously, we're gonna plant them far away from the wall, so the roots don't go into the wall, and we, we estimate seven to ten trees going there. And we're looking for, we're gonna figure out where we're gonna plant the other ten, ten trees. Tomorrow night, we're having our meeting, another village board meeting, a public workshop for the hospital, but after that, we're gonna have Victor Cornelius as a grant writer, who came to our tree meeting and has some ideas on some grants for the village, which involve a lot of things, wastewater, storm wa- well, not wastewater, water, water lines, storm drain lines, and, and sidewalks, and, and he's just gonna give us an information on potential grants out there, we could probably take care of all those things at once.
At some point.
At some point down the road. I know Heinz was at our tree commission meeting there for a while, and gave, gave Victor some, some good ideas on what needs to be done with the waste, with the water department, not the wastewater department, the water department. I believe that's it for the tree commission meeting. Okay, anything for the website?
No.
Finance and controls?
No.
Okay, other business?
I gotta do that tomorrow.
Do what?
This year, I forgot my sheet.
Oh, okay.
Explanations.
We, we received a proposed, oh, is anyone gonna, were you starting something, Heinz?
No, I was.
He's saying we're gonna do the water and sewer adjustments tomorrow.
Okay, are you working on that one billing issue with, with the business downtown, where we were over, perhaps overestimating the?
Yeah, I'm.
Okay, so I'm just gonna defer to whatever you decide on that, then.
It's been, it's, it's almost done.
Okay. We got a proposed second amendment to lease agreement from Sprint to do an equipment change out on the tower, and I looked everything over, and it, and the language looks good, the, the hardware they're putting on there looks acceptable. What they would do is then swap out the three panel antennas on the top of the tower at eighty feet, and put bigger panel antennas on the top of the tower at eighty feet. In the interim, though, they would have temporary hardware that's gonna go on there, just to keep this new technology going while they're doing the equipment change out. So, they've sent us some, a proposed second amendment to the lease, and there would be a four hundred dollar, four hundred and twenty-five dollar increase monthly for the Sprint deal. Now, the deal with Crown Castle is that they would split, they, we could have a fifty to fifty revenue sharing agreement with Crown Castle, who manages the tower, so we get half of that.
What, what is that amount?
Four hundred and twenty-five divided by two, whatever that may be.
Oh, no. Crown Castle, it's Crown Castle. You're saying Sprint and Crown, they're two separate.
Crown Castle manages the tower.
Oh, okay.
They bought out that J and S Towers.
Right, but there's no, there's no two, two potential payouts that we're, that we're thinking of?
No.
Because you confused me, you said Sprint then Crown Castle, so.
Right.
That's all one?
Yeah, I should've explained that.
Okay.
Where's that tower?
Right here, right?
Right here.
Oh, up in the building here.
Yeah.
They don't require any more equipment area, they, so before, when they approached this, they want, needed an extra, I don't know if you remember this, they needed an extra sixty square feet or something like that.
Right.
And it was less money, so this is, looks seemingly like a good deal, so. We can't sign it tonight, or we can't approve it tonight, because Rich hasn't reviewed it, but Lisa, did you bring the?
She just gave me a copy.
Okay. So, we're gonna have so many special meetings this month, I figure we could, we can approve it in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, any other business? We're gonna go over correspondence, yeah. Okay, correspondence. We have a request from the fire department, Rhinebeck Fire Department is requesting permission to hold a coin drop on June eighth and June ninth, two thousand and thirteen, that's a Saturday and Sunday. Coin drop will be set up in front of the Rhinebeck Firehouse, and in front of the M and T Bank on Mill Street. This is from Ken Scattergood, Vice President of Rhinebeck Fire Department. Like to have a motion to approve?
Is this, oh, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Second?
Any discussion?
Is this what we do every year? Does anyone remember?
I know the fire department does it every year, I'm not sure if it's the exact same dates.
Couple of days, right?
Yeah, it's a weekend.
I think it's new dates, because it's a new event that's happening at the fair.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
I know it's a home and garden show gonna be happening at the fair, that's supposed to be a big event. Okay. Coin drops are usually coincided with fairground events.
Well, this is the first coin drop, you know, it's one of the important ones, so.
Right, right, right.
We wanna make the fire department happy.
Right, right. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. You guys have a copy of the, this is from the Duchess County Agricultural Society, closing the streets? This is a letter to Dear Mayor Reden, the Boarder, Mayor Reden, the Board of Directors of the Duchess County Agricultural Society, respectfully submits the dates to close Mulberry Street North from Platte Avenue for the following events and days. Thursday, May second through Tuesday, May seventh, for the Antique Car Show. Thursday, June thirteenth through Tuesday, June eighteenth, for the Antique Motorcycle Show. And Tuesday, August thirteenth through Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, for the Duchess County Fair. Signs will be posted prior to closing, informing the public of street closure. And I've also enclosed a copy of our schedule for the two thousand and thirteen season to date. Not all contracts have been returned, so there may be some minor changes. This is from Andrew K. M. Parati, the new General Manager of the Duchess County Fairgrounds. So, I'd like to make a motion that we approve these road closures?
I'd like to make a motion to approve them as read.
Second? Second? Any discussion?
Any of these new, like the motorcycle?
That was my question, is, is this what we did last year? Jim remembers all this stuff, and I know you do, too, though.
I know the fair, the car show, this antique motorcycle show. I'm not sure. Pete, maybe Pete can help us with this, is he still here?
He's gabbing out in the hallway.
It's always good to have the head of the police department here. Pete, we have a request from the county fairgrounds, Duchess County Agricultural Society, to close the streets, we're just, we're not sure if these are the same as last year, it's um, May second through May seventh for the Antique Car Show.
Sounds about right, yeah.
June thirteenth through June eighteenth for the Antique Motorcycle Show.
Yeah.
And then August thirteenth through August twenty-seventh for the Duchess County Fair.
August thirteenth to twenty-seventh?
It says August thirteenth through Tuesday, August twenty-seventh.
Yeah, they closed down, they closed it early for the, for all the equipment that's.
Yeah, we weren't sure of the, you know, the three events here, we can't remember.
No, those are right.
Okay.
Yep, thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. We have a letter from the Rhinebeck Historical Society, everybody has this? They're asking us, Dear Mayor Reden and the Village of Rhinebeck Trustees, we are asking you to include one thousand dollars for the Rhinebeck Historical Society in the village's two thousand and thirteen budget. And there's a letter here, and Rhinebeck Historical Society has accepted the responsibility of serving as village historian. And it goes on to say they're getting busier and busier. And this is from David Miller, President, and they're located in the lower level of Star Library. So, I'd like, we've done this in the past, so I'd like to have a motion.
To be included in your budget, so that goes.
Yeah, I think we've included this in our budget discussions.
Yeah, but he's looking for the.
I was looking for the thousand dollars.
The new budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we'll.
Talk about it, then?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we'll set this aside, try to remember that. This is from Panda, from Bill Nieves. They're looking for a representative from the village for the Panda Board, they don't have one, Laura Linda resigned a few months ago, and if there's anybody out there who would like to be a rep for the Panda Board from the village, please contact Lisa at eight seven six, seven zero, one five.
Can we post this on our website?
Yeah, we could. I know the town's looking for a rep, too, I was at the meeting last night, and they're also looking for.
I thought Bill was their rep, didn't you?
Bill is, Bill Nieves?
Yeah, no.
I don't know what his title there is, but he's the one who wrote this.
But he's from the town.
He's from the town of Rhinebeck, but he's not considered the rep from the town.
That's what I thought.
He is? Well, I was, you were at the, the meeting last night, they, they said they needed a rep from the town.
I mean, they also need one from the town, too.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, we have a letter from Pat Coon. Uh, yeah. Dear Village Board, Saturday, Saturday, June eighth, two thousand and thirteen is Worldwide Knit and Public Day, known as W W K I P Day. We are a member of the Shepherd Knitters Knitting Group that has been meeting in the Village of Rhinebeck for over ten years. This will be our third year participating in this day, and it's very exciting, we would be demonstrating our age-spinning craft to the community, just sitting on benches and chairs knitting. Our member, Ira Gutner, has spoken to merchants, and they will be delighted to have members sit in front of their storefronts and knit. Pat Coon has discussed it with Sergeant Peter Dunn, he just left, mentioning to him that we will leave sidewalks free and not impede traffic. We will be doing this from ten A M. to two P M. on Saturday, June eighth, two thousand and thirteenth, with a rain date of the next Saturday, June fifteenth. We are anticipating less than thirty members participating. And they're looking for us to approve them sitting on the benches. So, I'd like to make a motion.
Are these existing benches, or are they bringing their own benches in?
Let's, let's make a motion to approve this.
Oh, that's right. I'd make a motion to approve it.
Second, and discussion?
Does it say, are they bringing in their own seat?
No, it doesn't say that.
I think it's existing.
Existing benches, thirty people, less than thirty members.
I think it's kinda cute.
Can't hurt, right?
No.
It's your sidewalks, it's a gathering on the sidewalks, that's all they're asking.
So, it's legal? Okay, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. And we also have something from the Duchess County Agricultural Society, a press release that went out, this is dated February eighth, it's impact study on what, what the county fair provides, and it's a little, do you guys get this?
I didn't see that.
The study, no? Okay, mainly says Duchess County Fair major contributor to local economy, we can copy this and give this to you.
Okay.
We have a request from Community Action, requesting us financial support of one thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seven cents. They requested this in the past, and the village board has denied this because the town of Rhinebeck donates to this, and it would be taxing, we would be donating twice, our, our taxpayers would be actually donating, donating twice to this, so we've denied this in the past. You guys have the letter?
Yeah, I saw that.
We should have a letter already, right?
A what?
We should have already a letter from last year.
Yeah, this is a new letter for this year, yeah. So do I have to make a motion to?
We just don't have to consider it.
We don't have to consider it, okay. Okay.
I guess the American respond.
Yeah. We have a request coming in today, I think it was from Young Rhinebeck, right, Lisa? I don't know if you have this yet.
No.
They'd like to rent the village hall up here a half day. Let's see, March fifteenth. This is from Young Rhinebeck, they'd like to rent the hall up here for half a day, for lunch and activities, games for approximately thirty-five middle schoolers. It would be nine thirty A M. to three fifteen P M. March fifteenth.
Should we check with the fire department?
Right, they wanna use it, not rent it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we can't.
You check with the fire department? So, it's available?
What's the organization?
Young Rhinebeck.
Facilities that they wanna utilize.
This area up here.
Well, when they bring, say, lunch, are they gonna bring their own food in?
Yes.
So, they're not gonna utilize any of the part of facilities?
I don't believe so.
We can, we can.
We can condition it on there.
We can, we can find out, and we just got this today.
We also need to find out what, who supervises them, right?
Somebody named Terry Hall. But we'll, we'll, we'll table this for now, just wanted to let you be aware of it. I believe that's it, right, for, Lisa, do we have anything else? There's a couple other things we're gonna talk about tomorrow night, we have personnel issue. The Rhinebeck Commons, the dedication of the street, we're gonna wait for that for tomorrow night, when Jim's here. And there's a resolution for support for, from an assemblyman for foreclosure. You guys have that?
Yeah, I read that.
Yeah.
I, I think I responded in email to this, I think we'll discuss that tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll discuss that tomorrow night.
Yeah.
And as you said, you're gonna do this tomorrow night, too, also the water and sewer adjustments. Minutes approval. One more thing, right?
What about this?
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, you can ask a question.
On the Young Rhinebeck?
Yes. Yes.
You're going to table it till when, so, I mean, do you want me to call and ask her who the supervision is, or when?
Yeah, can you call, can you do that tomorrow, so we can decide tomorrow night? Thank you.
And the food?
Yeah.
Okay, minutes approval.
I have a question about this bicycle pedestrian plan, are you, are you up to speed on this, Heinz, or...
No.
Okay.
Wait, what plan are you talking about?
The county's working on putting together some, some pedestrian plan for the area.
For, for, for 2000, for February 21st?
Yeah, well, that's the thing, right? We have to submit stuff by...
Oh, that's a grant.
Yeah, it's a grant proposal, so it's going to be delayed for that.
Yeah.
Right.
Clara talked to Jim about it, but...
We just missed the boat on this?
No, no, we're going to, we should be asking the guy tomorrow.
We can ask Victor tomorrow, yeah.
When Victor comes, okay?
Okay.
He's familiar with the grant, Victor is.
There's another grant guy that I have a name of, from, from Larry, for infrastructure stuff, you know?
Okay. Okay, we'll do the approval for the minutes, November 13th, 2012 minutes. Any...
I move that we approve them as submitted.
My second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have the minutes from December 11th, 2012.
Approve them as submitted.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we need, that's it, right? Any, anything else anybody want to talk about?
You have a hell of a meeting.
Wayne, you know, everything's okay?
Just some of the questions you've touched, you may...
Thank you, thank you. I'm honored that you attended my first acting mayor meeting. Mr. Tortavella?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
He was fishing.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
So, a second.
Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.